And here if you want to look at the slide that we looked at last month. And I also have the interactive map available that I can share and here. So if it makes sense to zoom in on something or, you know, look at two districts from two different options at the same time, I can do that. So those kinds of things I am ready to display as needed.
Would you like to?
Yeah.
Can you go to C or B?
You bet. It'll just take me a moment right now. Let me just.
That's okay. I'll not give it. Let me give it to you.
The quickest thing is to show the slide, so let me do that. C is here. So that is showing just the basic map. But would you like me to bring up option C in the interactive map?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. Okay, so you're seeing that window now that I have to change the layer that is active. So I will hide option A and show option C. And if you would like me to turn on any other layers, like the existing districts or precinct boundaries or some of the locations, I'd be happy to do that as well.
That's always supposed to be good. They want to give them us.
And paying special attention to actually C. And went back to looking at the active parts of it. Most of it, all of the communities, all of the people in the East Rocky Mount area, in their next area are actually voting in that, in the, in C district. Our towns are not split. Our communities are basically kept intact. Kind of easier for me to explain to people how, what C looks like, really. There doesn't exist to be a whole, any compactness here that they're overwhelming, since especially minority voting districts, C is, is pretty, pretty even in, in fact, there. None of them are, none of them are going to keep Tarboro whole.
No, we're not, we're not in one district.
This comes, this comes closer to what we actually are going to need. All of, none of them will keep Tarboro whole.
And Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that option C reduces the number of splits within Tarboro from three to two.
It does. It does.
And Princeville is kept together.
Right.
I, it may reduce the number of splits, but Tarboro is in three different districts. And I can, I can turn on the municipalities here. And you can see that there's a little bit of a gap where the river is between Tarboro and Princeville. And you can see that Tarboro is actually in three districts. The color looks a little different here in District Two. But as someone says, every plan, every option is going to divide both Tarboro and Rocky Mount because the, those municipalities' populations are larger than the ideal district population.
I just got a question as far as option C, map C. Talking about the minority population and stuff. I know things, when I look at equity, I don't see too much equity in option C, to be very honest. For instance, District Five, seventeen to seventy-seven. And that's Ms. Kent's district. Ms. Kahoon's district, thirty-seven, fifty-nine. Not much of a chance.
But if you s- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, but if you look at the upper, there's a wider, much wider, wider voting. For example, I think it's in, is it B, Warren A. that has your district.
Also, we're on C, this being incumbent's seat. Do you act, will we?
You bet. Just one moment, please. So those little purple dots, for example, here and here and here, show the location. And the, the number above them indicates which district that incumbent is associated with. And if it would be helpful for me to zoom in, please let me know.
Please.
Yeah.
I can probably zoom in a little more.
Okay. I will see it there.
All right. That's a little too much. I'm going to back up a zoom level. I have not heard anything in a while, so I don't know. Just, just been a long time.
It's been.
Three.
Yeah. It's been.
He's caught you as number two. Okay, he must be six. You're six, Ray, is that correct?
I am.
Okay, I'm trying to get a picture of Tarboro.
Okay.
I was looking at four and I couldn't have a five.
Right, a little bit.
Okay.
You're five, right?
I'm five.
Two.
Six. Just three. Oh, three.
Either that one.
That one just taking up part of mine because I was mostly in that area. There's a speed.
That takes you where?
Yeah, sure, there's a speed, Lawrence.
That's home for you.
That's home for you.
Yeah. But I'm two, so it's changing a little bit.
That takes you back home.
Yeah.
Is the dot on three right there on the lawn?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I cleaned my glasses, but I don't think it's a hospital. They might do it.
I don't think it would be bad.
There, there is no double parking gear, but in a, in a whole different district.
Mr. Ellison, you, you had a question of concern. Did you see the state explain?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I, I got a problem with C. As far as the equity of it in the numbers, especially districts highs in District Seven.
And Mr. Ellison and board members, I just will remind you that when Blake prepared the maps.
Can we, can we lower our voices so that we can hear?
I just, I just wanted to remind everyone that when, when Blake prepared these draft maps, he did not use any racial information. That, you know, race was not a part of the criteria for any of the three options. What we did was draw them based on the criteria that the board had elicited for those three options and then went back and looked at the racial data. And now, given that the percentage of the newly added area around Rocky Mount is ninety-three percent black, that made a tremendous impact in the overall racial balance or racial demographic information for the whole district. And so it is not frankly surprising to see that some districts have a different population spread. There were, in the current plan, there are a couple of districts that are almost, you know, they're forty-five, forty-six, or forty-eight, forty-nine. They're very closely split based on race. That's more difficult when you have a change in the overall racial population and such significant changes that need to be made. So the county went from forty-seven percent black to now fifty-six percent. When I say the county, the, the whole jurisdiction of the school system. And so again, and then keeping communities of interest together, not splitting some communities that might be more racially homogeneous, that all plays in. So I'm not saying that you have to like this map or not like this map based on what it does, but I'm just trying to give the context and the background. And based on those numbers, we do have some change in the overall racial makeup. And I don't know that it's frankly possible to go through and draw seven districts that have, you know, a close to fifty-fifty split or a forty, you know, sixty split.
I don't think, yeah, but I think, I mean, I think there's a little equity that can be worked out with a couple of these districts.
So there, there, that's why we did three options, so the board can feel comfortable looking at those three and comparing them. But just wanted to give that context for, for why this one in particular may have had more changes. But I think you'll see that in all of the plans, there's going to be some. But that's why we've, you know, put out the chart so you can look at those. I just want to assure you that we didn't look at race as a criteria for drawing any of these three plans.
So what about the hard topic map? When we have streets, communities, or the community, when they, when they go up and look at a map and want to put in input where was their street, can they identify that on the map? Or would it stay blank like?
No, I believe that last time, twenty twenty-one, we produced some large format maps based on PDFs that had some street. I don't know if they'll have every street that they had. Blake, I don't know if you remember, they had, they had significant detail in where the streets were. And we also will continue to have the interactive map posted on the website, so.
And I would say that, what, I would agree with what Deborah said, that it is, it's possible to list almost every street and label those streets. But what's, and I can, for example, include the municipalities, but showing each neighborhood in Rocky Mount at the scale that you need to have for a large format map means it would just be too cluttered and too hard to read when you've got all that information. If you're trying to do both neighborhoods and street names, as dense as the neighborhoods are packed in, in Rocky Mount, I, I don't think I'll be able to identify each of those little communities. As I said, municipalities, yes. And some of the outlying areas, for example, Lawrence or Battleboro, places like that, I can do. But like, also the, the individual communities within Tarboro that were identified by the community group that submitted their, their, their letter, I don't think I'll be able to put all of those on the paper map.
Like, would it be?
Hopefully, hopefully folks, if they're familiar with the street names in a particular area, they'd be able to, to look at those street names and use that to, to sort of locate and orient themselves and get a sense.
Blake, is it possible, maybe if the board narrows down the option to have out for the public to do a zoomed-in section of Rocky Mount or Tarboro or both that we could then blow up?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yes. That's definitely doable. I think it's a good idea.
So, do you, do you have any comments? We're still on C map, right?
For some sake.
Well, the street names will be, Blake, the street names will be there. Most people will be in identified areas of that, really.
Yes, the, the map showing the entire jurisdiction will include every street and as many street labels as, as will, will fit, which should be almost all of them.
And identifying boundaries will be there.
Yes.
I would know the neighborhood that I am, I would know where I am. I also, but I would know where I am.
And one, one note on that. For Rocky Mount, the city makes available their map of neighborhood boundaries. So I was able to use neighborhood boundaries. Within Tarboro, I was not aware of any map showing, for example, the exact boundary of the historic district or some of the other communities that were identified. But I was able to find the central point. And in, in some cases, the letter that the community group submitted had sort of boundaries or, or areas to make that clear. But I can put labels for Tarboro, but it probably won't have the specific boundaries of a neighborhood. Though I can check with, double check with like the Tarboro planning staff if they have any data about the specific neighborhood boundaries. There. Yeah, there was a slide showing the, the way that Tarboro is divided in draft option C, taking those community suggestions of the different areas within Tarboro into account. I'm going to, I'll share that right now, real quick.
As we're going through these maps as well, I think it would be helpful for board members to be thinking about whether there are any changes that you would like to see to any of these three options or if you are satisfied with your choices as written. And I do just want to remind everyone that option B two is the one we're looking at because that was the one that we drew to keep the incumbents in. Blake tweaked option B to keep incumbents in. So B two is the one that we had focused on. No, so option B was the one where there were two option, two incumbents. But option B two does not have incumbents seated in St. James.
I know, I know it does. That may be an option that we have to bring back.
Certainly. I, I mean, the board can direct any changes, go back to option B, ask for something completely new, or ask for tweaks to any of these three that are presented. Absolutely.
But what, that wasn't, wasn't that one of the first things that we said we didn't want? What we laid out there.
I agree, but I mean, but like I said, I don't see a whole lot of equity in some of the numbers there. I'd like to see, leave some people have a fighting chance. And this, with some of these, I don't see no fighting chance whatsoever. So yeah, I agree. The first that we talked about was that button. I know also that this is a work in progress and we, I mean, may have to go back and adjust and may have to.
I would check, I would check rather see that than see incumbents pitted against one another. That's the last thing I'd like to see.
Look, I mean, you get it. If somebody's got a, running, and they are running with seventeen and seventy-seven, I don't know how that's fair, whether it's an incumbent or not. Just saying, there's, I'm not, right now, at this point, I'm not going to throw out any of the options that we may have to come back and look at. And I understand they didn't look at race. But when you look at it now, to me, it's just, and I know it's not going to be equal. I know that, and I know the demographics change and all that. I do know that. But I'm just looking for some so-called equity.
And Mr. Ellison, I appreciate that. I just point out, so District Seven currently is, is closely split in total population and voting age population. In, in all of the new scenarios, it becomes majority black because it is the, one of the districts that's closest to Rocky Mount. And Rocky Mount has such an overwhelmingly black population, that portion of Rocky Mount that's been added. So any of the plans, because Seven has to take some of Rocky Mount, is going to increase that. Also, District Five is also currently closely split in black and versus black, in population, black and white population, about fifty percent or just over fifty percent. But it has to push westward toward Rocky Mount. So again, that is one of the reasons why that district is going to have an increased percentage of black population.
I understand that, but, you know, like in map C, we're looking in District Five, eighteen percent versus seventy-six. It's seventy-eight, I think, or seventy-six, I think. Eighteen percent versus seventy-six percent. That's, that's not much of a change, not in.
Because when you bring down fourteen hundred people from each one of those, in those areas, it's kind of seven percent of them.
I would say that even, you know, option A was not quite as bad, in my opinion, as option C, C, but still needed some adjustment. Well, it was option.
Actually. Yeah, I think option C.
Option B's a little, I mean, option A was a little more, you know. Evidently, what, I guess what bothers, you know, with option A is District One, eighty-three, you got eighty-four and eleven percent. Minority population, eighty-two, is thirteen percent. But that's, you're going to have that in, in Rocky Mount. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
And, and A to me splits too many of the districts of, you know, your district, you're right in your neighborhood, so you're, you split right into this.
It's split right now. Time's up, because the line goes straight down, time's up. It's always in like this. This, I think the, what we're looking at is the existing map. And I don't know if we can be able to throw any out or look at them differently. But I would also like to bring up the option that I would like to see is, be something along the lines of the commissioners to look at. The current commissioners' districts.
And I think that's something that we suggested, you know, as an option, that the board wanted to look at the commissioner districts. Those are seven districts that were drawn based on the 2020 census numbers. So certainly that's something. It would not keep incumbents in, in our current districts.
And I think we did talk about early on, we talked about that, put incumbents, we had two or three of them up.
And you might can, but what I'm saying, you might can look at that and see where it comes and then adjust from there. Adjust the lines from there.
I, I like the county commissioner lines because the community is very familiar with where those lines are. And so if you say, of course, our numbers are going to be different. Like where I would live would be different and where somebody would live would be different. Like where I would live would be different and where somebody would live would be different. But these are areas that our, when our community goes to vote, they're probably gonna vote at the same place that they're going to vote. You know, they're gonna be familiar with the district because that's where they live, that's what they're accustomed to. All of these other maps, and I know my two cents worth last time was make the map, don't change the maps any more than we have to, because I didn't want to make it confusing for the community, that they think this is where I'm voting and now I'm voting, I'm voting over here. I mean, sometimes the, the way districts are all cut up, county commissioners look like this, the school board looks like this, and, and then you go into Tarver and Rocky Mount, then you have town council, it's like this. To me, it's very confusing for every entity to have a completely different section of land. Now, I, I do know the county commissioner map, Raymond, I think, because I, I draw one. I think you and I are both in the same district.
We are.
But I think lines could move just a tiny bit and put us in two different districts.
And somebody else, two others are, and have the same problem.
But maybe with the county commissioner.
Yeah.
But maybe things could be moved around so we could follow that kind of, because I assume the numbers are basically what we want because they have to be that for the county commissioner.
I, I actually helped, worked with the county commissioners on their map and, and it does, I mean, it meets redistricting criteria of having a, you know, less than five percent above or below the ideal size for each, um, each district.
And I know we don't, I don't even have a printout of what the demographics are. I was just, I was just thinking it's something the community is familiar with.
Well, again, that's, you know, when I mentioned that early on, because again, it avoids confusion of, of the community because they are familiar with those lines and it's easier for the board of elections to administer elections and all of that. That didn't seem to be an idea that, um, the board liked at that time. But given now that you've seen options, you want to go back and revisit it. Blake, is that the county commissioners map that you have up?
Excuse me, yes, it is. This is from a, a presentation in October when we, we talked about how this was a division of the jurisdiction into seven districts, but how, uh, these districts would, um, how these compare to the locations of incumbents. And I think the key thing here is this district, uh, if you can see my cursor, the, the part of Rocky Mount here that does not have an incumbent in it, um, what would, we would be looking at is, um, having to distribute this district into, into other districts. Um, and there are different ways to do that, uh, for certain, but, but if, if the board is interested in having me sort of use this as a starting point.
What's already done for the commissioners, that district is already, um, late.
Yes, yes, this is the, these are the, the lines that are being used for the county commission. Um, but two of these districts, this one here and this one here would not have a school board incumbent in them. And, and this district and this district would be had two incumbents paired. Well, the numbering, the numbering could be assigned, however, uh, the, the board would, would prefer, the numbering doesn't have to be the same. The, the numbers that I show here are the numbers based on the school board districts, which, which incumbent is from which. So for example, this number two is showing the, the school board member who is currently representing the school board district two.
I mean, I just see some tweaking that might could be done with that to move down, the top portion, Grant Susan, that's area that she's familiar with, move it to the right side. I would just like to see it and see if, I mean, if we made some adjustments to it, just like we can make some adjustments to what we currently got and, and go back and look at them. But like I said, right now to me, um.
Which, which map are you talking about?
I don't know.
You talk about the county commissioners. Oh, okay.
That's what I was talking about right there.
Oh, okay.
But we haven't looked at option A or B, Susan, to see if.
Well, this might be a good time to, to look at the other two options that Blake has prepared and then maybe come back to this. The board's had a chance to look at all three and answer questions about those.
I just, I mean, me personally, I just don't, I don't see option C as an option for me.
I, I see, see, I wasn't even looking, actually looking at it. I was looking at the municipalities in place, the neighborhoods in place, and not split districts and those are characteristic. That's what I was really looking at. And people are familiar with where they are.
So I just put up option A. And again, this, this was the one where the, the consideration that was prioritized was trying to minimize change from the existing inactive districts.
So if you want, um, with A, um, you know, we're talking about the incumbents too, as far as looking at, looking after them as such. But I, um, District, huh? Yeah. District Five goes, um, voting age forty-six and forty, about forty-six again, that's fifty-fifty. That's a lot different than, um, option C for Five, that was, um, eighteen and seventy-six percent. Forty-six and forty-six, you got a, I mean, you got decent chance. Eighteen and seventy-six, you know, you ain't.
About the rest of them.
Okay, the rest of them, um, seven, and I know that Rocky Mount, that, that is, um, what, twenty-one, seventy-five.
So gee, you're just switching one district for the other. You're just, you're switching one district for the other? Same numbers, same percentage. You just, you said seven and then you just, the one that you named with five, uh, which was eighteen and whatever. And then you just named seven to two and what?
Option C, seven, forty and fifty-six percent. That's not quite fifty-fifty.
Oh, you, but what, you said seven or something.
Yeah, that was, um, um, District Five in map C is eighteen percent versus, um, seventy-six percent, eighteen and seventy-six percent. That's, what, oh, well over fifty percent difference. Seven in map A, twenty-one and seventy-five.
It's the same here.
I, I understand that. I can read it.
It, it, you're just, so you're flipping one person for the other.
I'm trying to give, give two incumbents that chance to, yeah, that's what you just said, not having incumbents run against one another.
But you just flipped numbers, you just flipped her to her.
We're just saying tweak the maps.
Same thing?
No, it's not the same.
It is. When you said seven, uh, uh, seven, you, you just switched the numbers around.
You're saying look, look after the incumbents one way and don't look after the incumbents one another.
I just said put that, don't pit that, don't say get.
You may have to pit.
Now, you don't, in order to get it.
Equity, yeah.
Well, you, you need to get equity. If, if, if equity is.
You tell me that's, that's equity.
But the one you just named is not equitable either. I mean, you just flipping names.
I know what's going on. That's what I'm saying.
It's the same thing.
They should at least be somewhere around sixty, uh, fifty, forty, or somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Exactly. Oh, I know that.
That was my point.
Oh, well, I know that.
That's my point.
Okay, so we, we, we just look at.
That's my point.
We look after two, we look after two. And the, and the elder one is the odd, um, odd man out. We look after one or the other. Over here, we look after, uh, option C, we look after that incumbent, option A, we look after that incumbent.
That's the odd one.
Yeah, it's the odd one. That's what, that's what, that's what we're saying.
But if we could tweak the county commissioner maps and move the lines a little bit, maybe we wouldn't have incumbents against each other. Because the lines could move a little bit, but not drastically, and have a little more equity and have familiar division. And I'll be honest, when you suggested that in the beginning, in my head, I could not show you where the line, I, I knew where my district was, but I was not familiar with everybody else's district to see how it looked compared to the school board.
I, I would need to see it.
And I have, I have a copy. I have a copy. And that still ain't gonna help you.
If, if he was willing to do it and, and.
That's, I've got it on. I put initials up, so I'll make sure everybody got one.
Is this the county commissioner?
Yeah.
I got all eight drawn. You missed one of them. This is.
That's right, they're all the same.
Okay, oh, okay. I'll dig up the county commissioners.
Yeah. Do you want to look at this? Well, I have one for me. I don't have one for it.
I think you got three of this hand.
Oh, okay.
Tell me about that.
Sorry. Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where we would be here.
I, I, I have little dots. I have little dots in our orange with initials and for, for Jewel and Evelyn.
You did it here.
I wrote it in pencil and then I made copies, so I don't know if you can tell. Because I couldn't decide.
So I, I see at the bottom, you have five and six in the same, uh, and, and then three and seven, which is he, he showed.
Right.
And color it was the same district. Nine and six and three and seven.
And X is from time to where. With initials.
The number, on the screen, the numbers are where the residence is.
I would need to see it.
Yeah. But I think it could be because, you know, I don't think putting incumbents against each other is a good idea either.
Yes, terrible idea.
But at the same time, if the, if the goal is to get a six-one board, then C is the way to go.
A six-one board.
Six minority, one one, because of the numbers. If you want a more balanced board, and that may not be your goal, I don't know.
Four, three, I'd say four, three, I don't say.
Then, you know, we could get something more like the county commissioners. And I think if there were minority, we should have, and this is my personal opinion, we should have more minority members on the board because of the population.
We should, absolutely. That's a given.
And I, and I am a firm believer in that.
That's a given, yeah. That's a given.
But at the same time, it should be, we shouldn't, we shouldn't cut, we shouldn't cut everybody out to get what you want. And, you know, and I'm gonna look out for, for me some, and you're gonna look out for you. And you know we are. I mean, that's, that's human nature. But I do want a fair map because this is a map long after we're done, people are gonna use. I mean, God, I mean, dear. I don't mean off board. But, you know, you want a fair one, and, and lines may have to be drawn later if communities pop up somewhere else and, you know, the population fills in somewhere else. We're gonna have to go back and do it just like we did a few years ago with the census.
So option, the, option. Currently, there are two, two districts that are majority white. Option B has two districts that are majority white. Um, if you look at voting age population, there's also one district that's within ten percent, um, in option B. So I think option B is that if you're looking at racial makeup, you know, but again, you have, um, three white board members, you only have two white majority districts currently. So that shows that race isn't necessarily what drives voting. And so, but in, in just, in option B, there are two majority white districts. They're just not the same two as you currently have.
So that's not always what drives it.
I don't know, Blake, if you want to put up District B since we haven't looked at that one. Uh, it's B two, uh, but for simplicity's sake, we'll, we'll do.
Either way, either way. Either way. But it doesn't always drive it, though.
Uh, sorry, I changed on my screen, but I forgot that I was sharing the county commissioner map. Just one moment. This is option B two.
The regular B two, not the county commissioner, right?
Correct, correct.
You all have to. No, I'm sorry, I was asking for what could.
The line from the county chairman became Tarver. For two.
B two, B two, um, District Five, thirty-one, sixty-one. That's well over the ten percent. And District Seven is twenty-seven percent, seventy percent, well over the ten percent. Ten, not two. Two is, uh, forty-two, about forty-three and forty-nine. Three is fifty-nine.
Three is fifty-nine, about sixty, and thirty-five. That's majority. Uh, the only, the only other majority white district other than four, in the, um, again, that, um, let's see. Six is thirty-seven percent white, fifty-six percent. Fifteen, thirty-seven, fifty-six.
Six. That's six. Thank you, that's it, too.
And I can share, if it would be helpful, I can share that table, I've got that on the slide here. Would folks like to see that, or is it tomorrow, I'll be looking at the, the map?
Put the table up.
Okay. Getting there? Sorry, for some reason, the sharing, let me do this. I know what's going on. Take me just one moment, appreciate your patience. Something happened when I opened up the other, um, other PowerPoint presentation from October. But now, I can do this.
Next is eighteen hundred hours.
And if it's helpful, I can, for example, zoom in like that, although that doesn't, this area is, uh, B two. Is that better? Of course, this is, this is showing the total population percentages and not the voting age population percentages.
This is total age population, you just say.
So this, these five columns here, yes, uh, I can, let's see, I can do, that may make it clear so you can see the columns at the top, but this is, yes, total population. Uh, I can move it over to the voting age population, but then you'll have to count, to see which district is which. And so the, the bottom ones here are, uh, option B two. All right, let me see if I can. What I just highlighted is C, and I will try to then zoom back. Uh, oh, no, it saved it, it, uh, sorry, that was not helpful, let me, uh, erase that, and I'll just dribble with my, with the pointer here, if you can see. Rets. It's this, these numbers here are C. Yeah, I'll, I'll, so, so now, what you're seeing, on the top, this is the, this is C, in this area, and the lower ones are the current. So.
I mean, I can certainly provide that information, but what I would just say, um,
Can we, can we have more, more moments?
As we're wrapping this, you know, I, I know you have a regular meeting. I, I just would, just would make two points. One is that, given the, given the demographic change in the population of adding Rocky Mount, the section of Rocky Mount that's ninety-three percent black, it is going to be, I don't know, I'm not the demographer, but I would say it's going to be impossible to come up with districts that are racially balanced to the extent that they are in the current, uh, plan. So that's number one. Number two, my other point is, is my, my lawyer hat, is that it is unconstitutional to draw maps based on regs. And, and so, we, we can look at communities, we can look at, um, current, you know, precincts and municipality lines, we can look at county commissioner districts. But what I cannot, what I advise you not to do is to look at maps and try to pick up districts that are predominantly one race or the other, because I do not feel that that would be legal or survive a constitutional challenge. So, um, again, we can tweak any of these maps based on criteria that are valid redistricting, uh, concerns. What I cannot advise you to do is to get down there in the weeds and say, we need ten percent more white voters in this district and ten percent more black voters in this district. Because I cannot believe, and I, you know, you hired me to be your, your lawyer on this, and that, I think, would not withstand constitutional challenge, so.
Thank you for those comments, we understand that. I'm keeping a little time frame right there. Cause we have another meeting, we need to go into.
I still would like to see the commissioners.
So, you, um, I think that you have a competing, um, interest or competing priority that you would need to give Blake direction, is that, do you want the commissioners' maps with just one, one board member in each of the seven commissioner districts? So tweak the commissioners' districts, or do you want the same, you know, um, board member in or close to their current district? I mean, I, I guess that's, maybe I'm not explaining that well, but Blake, maybe you should say what kind of direction you would need to tweak the commissioner maps.
Sure, and I think it might be helpful to, um, show that, show that map, the slide that I had earlier, this'll take me just a moment, because I closed down that PowerPoint presentation, um, because, can folks see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, as Deborah's saying, um, this, this is showing what the, uh, and let me, actually, let me, um, I'll just, I'll, I'll leave it like this, if you can see this okay. If the, the desire is to have a map that closely resembles this, but puts, uh, only one incumbent in each district, um, it would be helpful to have additional guidance about, if there are any kind of other criteria, i- if I have to make a judgment call, for example, with, with five and six here, do I just, do I do it in, in a way, such a way as to, minimize the changes to these existing districts? Or if I have a chance to try and do it in a way that makes the district, more similar to what that incumbent currently occupies?
Because I, I think that one way to conceptualize it is, there is no obvious board member, there's no obvious current board member sitting here tonight that would occupy that district under number one, given how far away everyone lives. So, it's not going to be a minor tweak to, um, to the commissioner maps to put a current board member in, in that district. I, I don't think. So what, what are the other criteria that you would have Blake use?
In doing this, I mean, sort of similar to the ones we considered before, uh, as I said, trying to make the districts, if I'm making changes to these, doing it in such a way that they mark, they, they might resemble the existing school board districts, school board electoral districts, or just trying to do so in a way that keeps these as close to the existing commissioner districts as possible. I think, I mean, I, we could also look at competitiveness, we could, uh, great, take into account the community of interest preferences as, as specified, but, I'm just looking at this and, and thinking about all the different ways I could, I could try and solve this puzzle, as it were. And as Deborah said, you know, moving a line here so that the representative of District five would be in, in this district up here, which currently doesn't have an incumbent, that's, that's the minimal change, that would be the minimal change option that comes to mind, at least immediately, moving, moving this, this line down so that it would include, the, the current representative of District five, but then, as Deborah said, putting, uh, creating a district so that one of these two people that's, that would be paired in this commission district is in, in this area, that's, that's a much trickier one. I can, I, I, I know that, that, um, time is, is tight, but I can, I can certainly provide the demographic information for the commission districts. I also have an idea about, uh, putting the demographic data on the, uh, option maps in a way that, that may be sort of easier to decode and, and make sense of than having to look back and forth between the map and the, um, that demographic table, if that would be helpful. the map and the demographic table, if that would be helpful. I'm happy to do either of those.
That would be helpful, and I would just say, try to just see what you can do with the commissioners, with the incumbents in different places. Just, we're not the worst for it, just to look at it.
Mr. Blake, when can you get this ready for us? I need to close this meeting out.
I can get the county commission district numbers and the map, maps showing the demographic information alongside or in the same image as the map. That's something I can do, I would say, no later than Thursday. The alternative plan using the commission districts, I would say sometime next week, maybe early next week, but it may take a little longer.
Whichever one you're doing. Number one is, the board of the elections spoke of the fact that lining up our districts with the county commissioner districts would be easier for the communities to explain it rather than having a lot of different areas that they have to memorize. But looking at the county commissioners, in my district, I said, I didn't even realize it was like that, like I'm looking at on this map. But you could, I would suggest that you would do that scenario. And the C scenario, I don't know about that D one, if anybody else is interested in looking at what the B would look like. But the county commissioner lines, see what you can get that done, and we want to see the best way we can get C done, to try that.
Are there specific changes to see that you wanted to focus on, or that you'd like Or, Dr. Wilson, are you just saying that your progress was...
I was just trying to get to scenarios.
So not make any changes to see at this point?
And of course, in the county commissioners.
Right.
Is there any particular guidance to give Blake on how to make those decisions about changing, other than just put someone in those two districts? Is there any other criteria to use?
We would like to see it done well.
As few changes as possible?
You change as possible.
And the municipalities whole and districts?
Right.
Whole.
Thank you.
And not split the community and area.
Looks at me up the river, he goes, across the street.
Because that's what's going to show where the precincts are.
That's got a good job.
I think he can do the tissue.
So I give you enough information, Blake?
I think so. I think so. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. I need to hear a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Don't move that chair.
Has been moved down properly second, that we will adjourn our work session. Any other discussion on the motion, on a favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same side. Motion is carried, and we have, ooh, five minutes, and we'll be back.
Probably half a minute.
So I thought the meeting was next week?
That's on all my calendars, meaning that everybody's got it on their calendars.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
I keep a, I go with my phone for three years.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
No, I have it.
Is it, how you doing?
I'm counting.
I'm speaking more than I'm trying to wait.
And let me talk to him.
And hang out with the sheriff sometimes, when he lets me.
He keeps me working.
He's communicating much better than us.
He's much better than us.
Appreciate you.
What's he doing?
Yes.
Oh, did you leave him, huh?
He's sure.
Oh, boy.
Stay like savings time.
Wait, wait, hold to play there.
All right, this hasn't been done tonight, let's see, I didn't even read it. That's a report from the retirement system. That's close session. What else do I do? That's got the break first, that's good.
There's a bunch of, you know, white people. That who are the people that you like, right?
Mm-hmm.
A bunch of white people.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
I thought I said my name, but...
Yeah, but he knew he was wrong. He knew he was wrong. He knew that. She knew that. And if he hadn't, if he hadn't, if he hadn't had the Cinderella run, he would think wrong last year. But the good news for him is, they owe him $6 million. Six million.
I would leave $7 million.
I'll take it, I'll take that for six. Of course, he's going to get another job, which means that he won't get the full six.
I thought I wanted to beat this, and mine.
Who's that one? Oh, yeah, he is, right. I saw that right. Yeah, he is, yes, man.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
I am excited that we have a lot of work to do, and each and every person that's in here needs to stay until the very end of our meeting, like two o'clock tonight. Stay in here till two o'clock tonight. We welcome you, we're delighted, and we're going to try to stay on schedule. At this moment, I will declare our March 10 business meeting of Edgecombe County Public Schools come to order. And at this time, I would ask each one to stand as we do our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, you may be seated.
The next step for posting in public feedback on draft redistricting, that's under items of action, take that off the agenda. And then, also, if you're consideration for the board, I'm not sure if it's right to mention at this point, but at least the mission for the board, because of the number of individuals signed up for public comments tonight, for the board to make sure, waive your time limit on that, so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
Has been moved down properly second, that we will approve our agenda as amended. Any other discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, the same side. Motion is carried, and we will move forward. Item three on our agenda is hope.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, other board members who can come without a vote. It is my pleasure to recognize several of our board members this evening. A major goal of the North Carolina Boards Association...
All right, at least having fun tonight, let's say, I didn't even read it. That's a report from the retirement system. That's close session. What about the other two? That's, uh, that's that break for us. That break for, that's good. There's a bunch of, uh, United Way people. That who are the people like United Way.
That's exactly what I said.
Yes, sir. Yeah, but he knew he was going. He knew he was going. He knew that. He knew that. And if he had, if he had, if he had, if he had had to send a river run, he would think wrong last year. But the good news for him is they owe him six million dollars. Six million.
I would leave him seven million dollars.
I'll take it, I'll, I'll take that for six. Of course, he's gonna get another job with me, that he won't get the full six.
That's all I wanna be for, for my money.
Who's that one? Who's that one, man? Top Jesus? Oh, yeah, he is, right, that's all right, right. Yeah, he is, kiss me.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
I am excited that we have a lot of work to do and each and every person that's India needs to stay until the very end of our meeting. Like two o'clock tonight. Stay in here till two o'clock tonight. We welcome you with delighted and we're gonna try to stay on schedule. At this moment, I will declare our March tenth business meeting of Edgecombe County Public Schools come to order. And at this time, I would ask each one to stand as we do our pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
And we might be next up proposing in public feedback on draft redistricting, that's under items of action, take that off the agenda. And then, um, also if you're consideration for the board, um, I'm not sure if it's right to mention at this point, but at least the mission for the board, because of the number of individuals signed up for public comments tonight, uh, for the board to make sure waive your, your time limit on that, so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our agenda as amended. Any other discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion is carried and we will move forward. Item three on our agenda, Miss Hope.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Good evening.
Other board members who couldn't hear that. It is my pleasure to recognize several of our board members this evening. A major goal of the North Carolina Boards Association is to provide growth opportunities for school board members. Through the North Carolina School Board Academy for School Boardmanship, school board members are provided high-quality programs to help them efficiently and effectively fulfill their responsibilities as leaders of public education, public education in North Carolina. Recognition is awarded to individuals who have participated in a minimum of thirty hours of training during the current academic year. Tonight, we'd like to recognize four of our board members for the training they have completed. Dr. Evelyn Wilson has achieved the Scholar's Circle level, which is the highest level and represents over nine hundred hours of training.
Thank you.
Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Dr. Evelyn Johnson receives the Gold Award, representing between eight hundred and nine, nine hundred hours of training. Reverend Raymond Privet receives an Award of Excellence, representing between three hundred and four hundred hours of training. Mrs. Lily Worsley receives a certificate of advanced achievement for between two hundred and three hundred hours of training.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our board members for your dedication and commitment to the students of Edgecombe. Next is our Employee of the Month. We are thrilled to recognize Tarsha Little, an exceptional children's teacher at Fairview Elementary School, as our Employee of the Month. She is more than just an educator, she's a beacon of compassion, patience, and unwavering dedication. Officially known as Fairview's Child Whisperer, she has an extraordinary gift for soothing even the most unsettled students and inspiring reluctant learners to reach their full potential. Her impact extends beyond her EC classroom. She's always willing to support all students, whether in EC services or general education, embodying a spirit of kindness and encouragement. Her warmth and commitment make a lasting difference in the lives of her students and colleagues alike. Please join us in celebrating Tarsha Little, the ECPS Employee of the Month for March. And I also have a gift card to present to Miss Little from Greg Sessom State Department.
Thank you.
And I'd like to invite the United Way, United Way COVID Horizon and Sheriff Clea Ackerson to podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Dr. Bryan and the rest of the board members. I'm Clea Ackerson, Sheriff of Edgecombe County, United Way Board Director and Community Campaign Co-Chair. It is indeed a pleasure again for me, along with Jenny Mulberry, I tell you, she's outstanding, she's our executive director, she keeps us pumping. Uh, to join you this evening, on behalf of all the board directors and the thousands we serve throughout the Twin County region, we would like to thank Edgecombe County Public Schools for a great twenty twenty-four campaign. And we look forward for recognizing schools and departments that have displayed support for United Way. United Way is a proud, is proudly a part of the Edgecombe County Public School System. United Way works in all towns and communities across the Twin Counties. Through United Way donations, we are able to fund thirty-five local health and human services programs in partnership with twenty-four nonprofit agencies, as well as assist with hundreds of yearly information, referral, and volunteer inquiries. This support helps thousands of our local citizens each year, improving quality of life for our children, adults, and families. We thank you, Dr. Bryan, for your leadership. I normally talk to him at least four times a week. Madam Chair, we thank you. Board members, we thank you, uh, because without you guys, we couldn't do what we need to do at United Way, so we, we really appreciate that. We also like to thank the local school coordinators and the new sir employee, uh, employees across the district who gave to United Way, uh, contribution of ten thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars this year. Thank you. Over the past seventeen years, the school district has contributed over a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Thank you guys so much. At this time, we would like to recognize our award-winning schools and departments. We ask that the campaign leader, please come forward as we call your school or department. Special recognition awards go to the three schools attaining the highest total contribution within the district. First, Fairview Elementary School. I'd like that energy back there. Campaign leader Trenica Arnold, Fairview Elementary School raised two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Second is Baskerville Elementary School. Campaign leader Marissa Hunter. Baskerville Elementary School raised one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And next was WA Patilla Middle School, campaign leader Bobby Harold. They raised one thousand. There you go. One thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, give them all around. Sure. Put these glasses down. Congratulations, guys. We would like to recognize other schools and departments for the support of United Way as well. Central Services, campaign leader Susan Hope. And I'm gonna move quickly so you guys can get, get, get on with your meeting, okay? Markman, let him have it. Campaign leader Brandon, who is a chapel? Chapel, yeah, I'm gonna make that simple, okay? North Edgecombe High School, campaign leader Latoya Futrell. JW Parker Middle School, campaign leader Ladisha McKinstry-Brockston. Coco Wimley Elementary School, campaign leader Naisha Dickens. Southwood Edgecombe High School, campaign leader Felicia Danza. Edgecombe Early College High, campaign leader Gerald Williams. DS Johnson Elementary, campaign leader Shaquell Wiggins. I'm gonna keep pushing. So Edgecombe Middle School, campaign leader Dr. Janata Faulkner. GW Carver Elementary, campaign leader Teresa Webb. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Frenchfield Elementary School, campaign leader Brittany Avery. Stox Elementary School, campaign leader Ebony Pittman. And Phillips Middle School, campaign leader Natasha Joyner. Let's give everybody a round of applause, I'll tell you. I'm saying tall like I'm tall over here. Yeah, yeah. Like I'm like six-three, he's still taller than me. Okay, no, no, no. Outstanding, guys. Finally, guys, we've been getting out of the way, we want to thank you again, Dr. Eddie Bryan, Superintendent. I appreciate you, sir, I say that publicly and I say it loud, I appreciate you a whole lot. United Way appreciates you on a bigger note, that was kind of personal on the dinner, so we appreciate you. Board of, Board of Education members, we appreciate all of you guys for allowing us to come before you and allowing your staff to participate, so we really appreciate it. This Susan Hope, uh, we pushed a lot, a lot through, yeah, let's give her a round of applause. She catches a lot from us, so we really appreciate you, okay? All school and department campaign coordinators, we thank you guys so much. All school principals and departmental, departmental leaders, we thank you guys so much. And all employees that donated to United Way, thank you guys for your time and support this evening, and we hope you guys have a safe and a good night. Thank you, guys.
I don't think everybody understands quite what you do in this fundraising effort throughout the community, knowing to meet your goal, go beyond the goal. Both of you do so much for the community, uh, both, both in fundraising for United Way, but also in deeds, I think you all deserve it.
Are we intended to read Dr. Shaw?
All the fun is over. Okay, we're at item number four on our agenda. At this time.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson, just as a reminder, I think if, if it's the board's desire to vote to waive policy twenty-three-ten, which limits public comment to seven speakers, to permit all non-speakers to speak tonight, that is in the board's discretion.
Could I hear a motion to?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we waive the policy and allow all non-speakers to speak tonight. Certainly.
Has been moved and seconded that we will waive our policy on number of speakers to speak. We have, our policy allows seven, and we have nine signed up, and that's why we have to do this motion. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion is carried, okay? All right, we'll get started, and our time limit is three minutes. Teresa Austin Stokes is listed first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, we've heard many options concerning the redistricting maps, but I am here, uh, this evening to ask that you consider option C. Um, option C emphasizing, uh, we've met with the community members, um, on several occasions, and option C, uh, is a favorite for our communities. Of all the annexed area of Rocky Mount, um, the districts will be up for election in twenty twenty-six, no small towns are split, and most communities of interest are kept together. Uh, small towns, as well as the communities of Meadowbrook and South Rocky Mount, and I must emphasize, I am a community member of Meadowbrook, we want to make sure that our precincts are kept together and that we make as less, um, changes as possible, so that it will not, um, cause confusion. Uh, this is a big change for everyone in the community, and we want to keep things as normal as possible, and we want the residents of Rocky Mount to have fair treatment, and we request that option C, which also will keep the precincts together, and we are, um, vouching for that as well. And for all the students and the representatives who will be impacted. Again, avoid as much confusion as possible during this transition as we embrace the new changes. Keep municipalities, precincts, and districts whole, make as few changes as possible, and again, I'm here to request, along with the community, that you choose option C. Thank you.
Okay, Susan Perry Cole.
Good evening, members of the school board and Mr. Superintendent. My name is Susan Perry Cole, I'm a resident of the Edgecombe County side of Rocky Mount. I'd like to make a few brief remarks about the redistricting match you considered in your work session. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for the transparency it has demonstrated throughout the redistricting process. Along these same lines, I'd like to thank the board for consideration of communities of interest in Edgecombe County, and I'd like to encourage the board to respect these communities of interest going forward. And I'd like to express strong community support for map C, which prioritizes respect for communities of interest. Map C has the best distribution of black voting age population across all districts of all of the maps, and it avoids the, the problem that is shown in maps A and B, which reveal a high concentration of black voting age population in some districts. Map C is easy to describe to the community due to the number of whole and mostly whole precincts that are preserved and the distinct and familiar boundaries which are included in the map. I'd like to also encourage that option C, encourage the board to keep option C on the table for future consideration, so that the community members can review and respond to this map. Going forward, I'd like the board to conduct in-person public information meetings in Rocky Mount and Taboro and et cetera, so residents have a better opportunity, let their voices be heard. Thank you.
Jackie King.
Good evening, board members and superintendents. As a first statement, my name is Jackie King, I reside in the Battleburg community, which is part of the city of Rocky Mount. Currently, we are in District One of the changes. What I like about option C is it will not split the precincts of Battleburg with its ligand, we got a tight connection, and, and the option C that keeps all of us together, it's not hard to, to explain to the people that need to vote for. I know it'll be different with the commissioner's seats, that'll make it a little different, but to me, option C is the best option for Edgecombe County. Um, to D-Dub, I already said it, I won't go back to what they said, I just moved forward, but in my opinion, option C is best because it brings together all the additional principles. Um, and, and option C, all incumbents have a separate district, I just want to add to that, and it's a favorite among the community, so in my opinion, we should use option C. Thank you.
Tamisha Patterson.
Good evening, everyone. It's great pleasure to be here.
Good evening, everyone. It's a great pleasure to be here. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us speak. I am Tamisha Patterson, I'm president of the Southeast Rocky Mount Community Organization in Southeast Rocky Mount. As a leader, we support Option C as well. Option C keeps all the communities in Southeast Rocky Mount together. This will be helpful during our voting period. It keeps voters interested and engaged in voting. Map C also keeps the largest precinct, which is Meadowbrook, twelve-one together. Option C is a favorite of the community and needs to be included in the options for the community to review and respond to. Thank you.
Next, Camilius Dance. Number two.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Camilius Dance, Regional Director of Eastern North Carolina Civic Group comprised of twenty-three counties. A life-filled payment member of the NAACP Rocky Mount branch, Democratic Party Precinct Chair Level One, and a product of GW Carver Elementary School, South Edgecombe Middle, and Southwest High School. What is equity? Question for Ellis and Ken. Face it, Rocky Mount is predominantly ninety-plus percent Black. Keeping the community together should be the main thing. I'm quite sure you want to be re-elected, but as I stated the last time I spoke, it ain't all about you. You should keep the community's best interests in mind. Commissioner districts, all of them do not touch Rocky Mount. I don't see how you're doing to do whatever you're trying to do. There is no way that all precincts will be in the same school district. As stand now, I might be in District One School Board, District Three or Four County Commissioners, and you name it. And if people ain't got used to it by now, you don't need to add more confusion to what you're trying to do. Option C put me in Ellis District, but I vote in Level One, I'm the precinct chair. Now, Privet is my school board member. Pines Top's precinct is in Ten One. Are you scared you're going to get voted out? That shouldn't be the issue. The issue should be what's best for Edgecombe County. At the end of the day, it is about what is the best interest of Edgecombe County and not just about you. Option C, as it stands, is the answer.
Nathalia Reed.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathalia Reed, and I would really, really like to thank the board for their transparency and all the hard work that you're pouring into this redistricting process, and I know that our participation encourages you to work a little harder to get things done. And we are greatly thankful for that process. I do live in Meadowbrook, and I am thankful that Map C did a lot, put a lot of effort in keeping us together. And I'm also a former employee of the Rocky Mount City School System. Rocky Mount used to be its own school system, and keeping that balanced is very important, you know, to our citizens, so that they won't get, you know, totally confused about how we have transitioned from being our own school system to being a combined over the Nash side, now to the Edgecombe side. So we appreciate your sensitivity to our needs. We are looking forward to more in-person public information meetings and hearings in Rocky Mount, Tarboro, Pine Tops, and North Edgecombe area to help everybody to embrace the changes that are coming. And we are thankful for your close look at this redistricting process and the redistricting principles that were discussed today, were verified, and we thank you for considering, you know, more options going forward, so that at the end of the process, everybody can have had some input. Thank you so much.
Angela Bryant.
Good evening, board members. Angela Bryant from Rocky Mount, North Carolina. I just want to commend you for having the courage to have this conversation and discussion about race and racial makeup of our communities that you've been having, and to note that what you are discussing is at the heart of almost all the political decisions in our Twin County area. And to the extent you grapple with it and come up with a solution that is fair in our community, you will have been solving an issue of the ages. You will be moving us forward on an issue that has faced us for ages. With the issue of the county commissioner districts, I just wanted to make one point, that with the number of adjustments you will have to make to the county commissioner districts because of where you all are located as incumbents, it will be a new map, just as the maps, similar to the maps A, B, and C that you already have. He's gonna have to reconstruct districts to account for you. And a part of the issue is that three of your residences, as you know, are in Tarboro, so Tarboro will by definition be split three ways as a starting point, and then you have to go out from there. It is also the case that whole precincts, let me just say this, of the three districts we got maps, we had Option C provided a more fair percentage of distribution of Black voting age population, avoiding the high numbers of eighty-two percent in Option A and ninety-two percent in B. Having whole precincts, and mostly whole precincts, make it easier to vote and run. I have run for offices. When you can tell people this precinct is the precinct I represent, then they can relate. When you have good and familiar boundaries for people, that also helps to describe the districts. Option C did provide that option for us. Please remember all the redistricting principles that you agreed to when you got started. And Option C brought together all those principles, and I hope whatever map you do next to consider will bring it together, bring together those principles. And finally, I wanted to say, that also consider the communities of interest that we provided along with the principles. If you look at any adjustments to the maps, please keep Option C on the table along with any other maps or adjustments that you made. Thank you.
Hi. Alicia Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alicia Johnson, I am the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Historic Edgemont Community Association. I am here to put forth that we all like Option C. We have all met together, and we decided that this was a better option for us. I am going on past experience. I lived in Nash County, and we redistrict. One of my sons went to Northern, the other one had to go to Central. I'm trying to make sure that that does not happen in our community. We want to keep our communities together and whole, because it does make sense. And not only that, it makes it easier to explain when I go to association meetings, what we are looking forward to, what is going to happen, and how it will affect you. We want to have, from you, you've been so far to this point, that we need to have consideration to have proposed timelines, so I can explain to them when this is going to happen, how it's going to happen. And we also would like to have a public forum in the communities that are affected, Rocky Mount, Tarboro, Pine Tops, and North Edgecombe. Our children are being shifted all over the place, and parents don't understand why, and it's easier to explain to them if we keep it as far as communities. Each community, we got Edgemont, we have Meadowbrook, we have Southeast Raleigh, all these communities, and we can explain it to them a little bit better. I thank you for your time. You have a good evening.
Mr. James Brand.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us, this open discussion. My name is James Brand, a seven oh four NC nine seven east in Leggett. I come today to express support for Option C is the best option, given you want incumbents in separate districts, and then given the incoming population Rocky Mount is not all put together, but is dispersed between three districts. We like Option C because, from my perspective, from our community perspective, keeping Ballerburg, Wickers, Red Hill, Leggett, Dunbar in the same district is a plus for us, we all. And we do hope you have public hearings in Rocky Mount, Tarboro, Pine Tops, and Leggett when these maps come out for discussion. Thank you.
They heard my mouthpiece. They kept their speeches to three minutes, so I had to include everyone. Thank you. Okay. Now we have moved to item number five on our agenda.
I'm here, I was staying, I got taken out of my earlier day, and I used to stay with y'all till twelve o'clock at night. I got to go today.